We will now call the city council agenda to order. It's Monday, May sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. And I'd like to remind you of our disaster procedures. Tornadoes in the basement, fire outside, and exit through here. And of course, many of you know where the stairs are up towards the front of the revolving door, I mean, not the revolving door, but the pulled door in the front to go down to the basement. Okay, since this meeting is videotaped, it's important that everyone speak directly into a microphone when speaking. Roll call, Janet?
Alderman Hazel.
Here.
Alderman Whitaker.
Here.
Alderwoman Duco.
Here.
Alderwoman Eris.
Here.
Alderman Randall.
Here.
Alderman Ferguson.
Here.
Alderman Anthony.
Here.
Alderman Ovian.
Here.
Alderman Dillman.
Here.
Alderwoman Schaefer.
Here.
Alderwoman Steele.
Here.
Alderman Rothweiler.
Here.
Alderman Elmore.
Here.
Alderman Wygon.
Here.
Alderwoman Sullivan. Alderwoman Ostoff.
Here.
Alderwoman Sullivan is excused.
Yes. Okay, department head roll called.
City Treasurer Beerman.
President.
City Attorney Horner.
President.
Police Chief Bill Clay.
Here.
Fire Chief J. Pete Penne.
Here.
Finance Director Jamie Maitrait.
Here.
Director of Public Works Jason Poole.
Here.
Director of Wastewater Randy Smith.
Here.
Director of Library Neander Spearman.
Here.
Director of IT Scott Markovich.
Here.
City Engineer Sal Elcott.
Here.
Director of Health Housing and Building Scott Tyler.
Here.
Director of Economic Development Planning and Zoning Cliff Cross.
President.
Director of Communications and PR Kathy Kaiser. Kathy is excused.
Yes. I like your special tickets up there in the top floor. Thank you all for being here tonight. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. No public hearing tonight, but I know we have people here for public participation. If you'd like to raise your hand and be recognized for public participation, okay? I'm asking, okay, I know we have some people here, we have Carol from Art on the Square, and I know we have some people here for Avon Street Project. And I'm trying to get all those same people together at one time to speak on the subject. So Carol, would you like to start with Art on the Square?
Well, I'm having something delivered, so if you could start with someone else.
Okay.
You can deliver it.
Okay. So let's start with, um, let's start with Avon. If you're here to speak, would you please line up?
And when you come forward, you need to state your name and where you live, okay? Good evening. My name is Kathy Mordini, and I'm here for the Avon Street. Oh, Sixth Knollwood. Is that our area? We just moved. Sixth Knollwood and Bava, six-two-two-two-three. I have brought a few people with me today that are in support of the project. I wanted to introduce three of them that are part of the project. And I just wanted to let you know that we are here if you have any questions or concerns. We are here to answer any questions that you might have. We have Patrick. Patrick is coming to us from Fallon. He is our, he is our chef, and he's guiding us with the kitchen. And then we have Ash. Ash is, she's been doing the market on the west end of town, so she is helping us with the pop-ups. We are moving her into town from Collinsville. Very excited to see what Belleville is doing. You'll hear that from her. And then Lauren. Lauren is in charge of our event space. A little dream team for me, so they are very experienced. They are very excited about being part of this project, and we're just wanting to get this approved and get moving with it, so.
It's been a while with one of these. Hello, Pat Moni, please leave my address.
Yes, please.
It's Seventh Vanderbilt Place in O'Fallon, Illinois, six-two-two-six-nine.
Go ahead. You don't, you're working.
Yes, sorry. So I'm here in support of this project as a chef, as a cook, as a community member, although I live in O'Fallon. I'll give it my time, I'm sorry, out here in Belleville. And I like this project because of all the opportunities it presents for somebody like me in this industry to have the creativity in the space and some of the connections I have to bring in other chefs who are masters of their crafts to possibly, you know, Belleville is up and coming, it's, it's, it's got a lot of growth and a lot of prosperity, and I think that bringing in other chefs, other artists, especially in this part of town would be a great idea, a great opportunity for a lot of, a lot of people and keep those community ties together. And that's, that's really what restaurants and what food does. So that's what I would like to say. Thank you for the opportunity. I will pass the mic.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Hi, my name is Ash Satterway. I live at four-three-six South Chestnut Street in Collinsville, but we have been trying to move to Belleville for several years, working on the perfect house. I am a local artist and entrepreneur, and I've been doing the, last year was the West End Any Market, and this year it's called Belleville Any Market to let it expand and grow. We had a great response last year, and we have a great response growing this year for our July Market, and I'm really excited for what's happening for Belleville and what could happen in the future. So we really would like you guys to consider this for the, for the whole community, for us, for who's coming, for artists like me, entrepreneurs, servers. So thank you for your time.
Hello, I'm Lauren Dowdy. I live at four-twenty-nine Shiloh Station Road in Shiloh, Illinois, six-two-two-six-nine. I may live in Shiloh now, but I'm born and raised in Belleville. I come from three generations of Belleville business owners, and I have lived in St. Louis for the last eleven years. I got a little bit of an opportunity to see what's available in the big city across the river, and it's community. I think Belleville is great at building community. I think we could do a little bit better by inviting other artists. Artists and young people are really the heartbeat of the city. We're the ones that are bringing children into the environment, finding things to do for those children, and things to do for young families is really hard to find unless you want to go to, you know, a restaurant or a bar. So we're really hoping to create something really cool for families, for young entrepreneurs, for artists, and I really just hope that everyone else can see the potential in bringing that to the area and what it can do for downtown Belleville.
Thank you. Next.
Hello, my name is Sally Farrington. I live at one-twenty-three North Douglas in Belleville at six-two-two-two-zero. We just recently moved here, just a few months ago from North Carolina, to be closer to family. I have, my daughter Emily Smith lives in Ront Avon, and part of what drew us here to Belleville specifically was the fact that there's so much happening, and I feel like this project is going to add to the vibrancy of the city. I'm also an artist, so to have more opportunities for the artistic community to grow and flourish, I think it will bring people to the area. I think it will cause people that already live here to be more involved, and it would be a huge benefit to the area. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Hi, my name is Sean Hall, two-oh-one Law Bash Avenue. My wife Gina and I moved to Belleville about eight years ago, and yeah, something that we quickly found here is that there is a lot of creativity, culture, and character to Belleville, and it stood out, and we quickly got involved. And I know that there are a lot of, there are a lot of maintainers for, you know, a history like this city and so much culture and so much that is going on, a lot of maintainers. But I, we found that there are very few visionaries. Being visionary, sticking your neck out, taking a risk, having grit, it's hard to find. And I think that's something, these are the people we need to hand over the keys to in a way, and trust them, stick out our neck for them. And we got involved with Belleville mural project and got to meet Kathy Mordini and Kenzie Mordini, and quickly found that they are super passionate about this city. And I just want to cast my support and that they are trustworthy, and with this project, they are going to not just, if the first attempt isn't what they think, they're going to perfect this project. And I just want, I want to ask you to also support them and trust the visionaries that the city has. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Yeah, hi, my name's Ned Pataoff. I live at six-oh-eight South Jackson Street. I got something brief I wanted to prepare for you in support of Kathy. Our Victorian home is a recent purchase on South Jackson Street, and my family is currently investing, investing heavily in the property and the community. However, it's disheartening to see the high number of vacant, unoccupied, and abandoned buildings immediately around our home and throughout the downtown area just off Main Street. So I'm here to support Kathy and Kenzie because they are exactly the people who are creative, think out of the box, and don't want to do things just the same old way. So if it wasn't for Kathy and Kenzie, our family wouldn't have invested in downtown Belleville. I believe that my city needs to attract more young people, much younger than I, built the gray hair, and, and that's an investment in our future. So not to bring another office space or a property purchased to suddenly become unused building. Incubators and flexible working spaces are here now in many cities in America, attracting youth, ideas for growth, and our futures in Belleville could be a part of that too, not just a destination party. Thank you for your consideration and think beyond the usual and be progressive. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, City Council, my name is Bill Onyere, and with my wife, I live at three-oh-one Avon Street, five doors down from the proposed project on Mascota Avenue. With several of my neighbors, we've been discussing this over the last couple of days, and there are four concerns about this project I'd like to lay out for you. The first concern is the process that we've now come to observe. This RFP was only open for three weeks. That's entirely an inadequate amount of time for any developer. And I've developed condos, I've developed commercial property, we own a commercial property on Main Street. That's entirely an inadequate amount of time for anyone to develop a good RFP to present in a project like this. So additionally, the advertising that put, that put out the RFP was inadequate. There should have been far more advertising. When we look at this property, this property is directly across the street from the Governor Curran Home, which is the most significant historic site in the city. It is indeed one of the most significant historic sites in the state. It is the home of the man who nominated Lincoln for the presidency. That, while I am certainly not opposed to development, and I've developed properties in this town, I believe that that quadrant, that that area is, should be developed with that in mind of the historic significance, and we don't need to put in a development that does not meet what, what needs to be developed there. I have reviewed both of the RFPs that were presented for these projects. They are graphically stunning. There, there is some beautiful work that went into those projects in terms of graphic design. Unfortunately, substantively, I find them lacking. There is no address of public safety. We have seen flash mobs in this town, we've seen flash mobs in the Farquhar Heights, we've seen them at Shiloh. There was one just the other day in Circle K. I'm sure the police chief can talk to you tonight about these flash mobs. A venue that is proposed in a historic residential neighborhood does not need flash mobs descending upon it if, if one of these parties gets out of control. Additionally, there are no timelines contained in the RFP, and there is no consideration, or certainly inadequate consideration of the historic nature of that neighborhood contained in the RFP. We believe that those, first of all, the process needs to be revisited, and secondly, the RFP needs to be revisited. We would urge that the council table this and defer it for at least sixty to ninety days, preferably at least ninety days, in order to do two things. Number one, it would avoid the appearance of impropriety in only having one RFP submitted due to a, an open window of only three weeks. So you would cure that problem by giving more time to consider it. And secondly, it would give other potential developers the ability to submit an RFP. With a site of this historic significance, it may well be wise to advertise this statewide and see what kind of reaction we get from it. Thirdly, the RFP as currently designed, the pavilions that are proposed to be placed in there would serve, I'm afraid, we're afraid, as havens for the homeless. We already have a very significant problem, you're, each of you are aware of it, with needles, of drunkenness, of drug abuse, and that, and I were walking our dog at four o'clock in the afternoon three days ago, and there was a gentleman behind the gazebo urinating. We don't need that moved two blocks south to these pavilions where it's going to impact on what we like to think of as the jewel of the historic district. You know, Avon Street features the symphony of fall, we, we have Christmas walks, all of those are neighborhood initiatives, and we don't want to see those impacted adversely. Fourthly, and finally, the very nature of a venue space is going to have erratic hours, it's going to have erratic use, it's going to have different types of parties. Those, that type of use is not conducive to a residential neighborhood of historic characters such as, such as we have with Avon Street. I think that is certainly of note that the house located on the corner of Charles and Lincoln, one door away, and actually it backs right up to the former Farm Bureau building, the former city building, was sold in less than a day this, this last weekend. They have a, they were asking through nearly three hundred thousand dollars, two-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand dollars, there was a bidding war, and that property sold for twenty-five thousand dollars more than the asking price. So that home went for well in excess of three hundred thousand dollars. This development needs to be thought about because the kind of development we need, and want in that neighborhood, is as, as all of the previous speakers spoke about, we want to see young families. I've lived there thirty-seven years, it's been a generational change on Avon Street, and we have young families there now. As was pointed out, this property's been vacant for many years. I don't think that it's going to hurt anybody to have that property stay vacant for another ninety days while we have an adequate RFP process and while Ms. Mordini has the opportunity to correct the deficiencies in her current RFP. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Next.
Hello, my name's Jenny Mealan. I live at three-fifteen Avon Street, and I do apologize, I'm very nervous. As Bill said, we do want to see the growth, we want to see good things. The one thing I will say though is, we was talking about the historic home on the corner, the corner house, but right across the street from that is Charlie's Bar that's been there for years. And it didn't seem to attract any savory folks or people or anything like that, but really what I'm here to speak about is the fact that we have an opportunity to have a place for artists to gather, a marketplace that just brings young people to. I don't know if any of you have the opportunity to go to Vine Street Market in O'Fallon, but it's fantastic. And I, and I think Belleville has that same opportunity. One of the things that I learned from COVID, and I think we all probably learned from COVID that we need to remember, is COVID kept us away from each other and locked up. We need community, and we need spaces like what Kathy is suggesting. We need spaces like that to gather art, music, laughter, community. That's what keeps us healthy, right? So, yeah, the building's been sitting empty. It's a beautiful building. It's a beautiful area. It's just a gorgeous area. And we bought the house on Avon because of the area, and I only see this new proposal as something that's going to help us grow and even be more beautiful. I mean, who doesn't want to go in with the art all day, right? So my name is Jenny Mealan. I appreciate the time. Thank you very much.
I do want to make you, Jenny, aware that there's a group of people working on, and have been working, pretty much since I became mayor, on the city market, which I know that we have an intern that is working on her fourth or fifth degree, and she is working with our economic developer. And the city market is, it would, is going to be in a building that we already own over here by, across the street from the Belleville News Democrat. We have had people in there, and so it's, it's going to be a place for vendors and artists and bakers, things that we have downtown but would not compete with what we have downtown, and also produce and things like this. But the beauty of it is, is why we started discussing this, is the fact that we wanted, you know, Belleville started with the Heritage Society many, many years ago with the first farmer's market around this whole area. So after meeting with Belleville Main Street many, many weeks ago, about the second or third week I was in office, the city market came up, and we have been working on that ever since, which would be a place then to move some of the things from the outdoor market in so you could have it all year long.
Oh, and I think that's wonderful.
Yeah.
I think that's amazing. And I will tell you that when we first moved out of the area, the, the farmer's market for Belleville used to be at the bank. Does anybody remember that? It was fantastic, right? Do you remember the people in the van who made all the bread and the pastries, and, and then they were gone, and I was just like heartbroken. And we do freak like the one that's currently there, right? And I'm so glad you guys are talking about moving it. I mean, that's wonderful because it needs to be out of the sun. But, so, and that's like this new place, though, I think, what a great opportunity then to have a place for music and art. I mean, and I don't think it would go all night. I mean, frankly, I, I, I don't see a scenario where that would happen all night. But again, I mean, you know, people want Charlie's Bar opened back up. We used to hear the music from there, and I was okay with it, I love music. So, I mean, ultimately, it's your vote. I'm just a citizen, live on Avon Street, and I support it, and thank you for letting me just have my time.
Thank you, Jenny. Next.
Linda Weisenstein. I own two properties on Garfield, at six-two-six East Garfield Street and six-two-oh East Garfield Street. I've spent a lot of time and a lot of money renovating them. And I have one has a business in it, which is Airbnb, which is very successful. And I know when I did do that, I know that all the neighbors were asked if they were okay to get around it. I don't know whether they're going to do the same thing with this project or not. I have no problem with a business being in that building, but I think it could be a better business perhaps just because of the noise, the traffic, and that sort of thing. And I agree with Bill on a lot of the points, and I noticed one thing on this, it says that the pending review and approval from Belleville Historic Commission has already been approved, and that is absolutely not true. I'm on that commission. That has never happened at all, so I just want to let you know. I'm not for it. I think that I'd love to see it tabled and people to study it a little bit more. I looked also at the budget, and it's not, you can't build a restaurant or a kitchen for that price. It's just not possible, you know? And how are you going to support it? You know, do you have enough money? Are you borrowing this money? What are you getting the building for? It doesn't say. There's so many things that are missing from this proposal that I would like to see. I appreciate your time, and thank you very much. I love my neighborhood, and we like it nice and quiet. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak on the Avon Project? I do have something to be read into the record. This is from the Gustav Kerner House Restoration Committee, addressed to Mayor Patty Gregory and the Belleville City Council. Dear city officials, we ask the proposal for one-twenty-three to one-twenty-seven Mascuta Avenue in the Old Belleville Historic District be, be viewed within the existing historic preservation ethic that was established in nineteen-seventy-six and has grown since that time. The Old Belleville Historic District is comprised of one hundred property owners who have dreamed of an historic neighborhood for the past forty-five years. The Gustav Kerner House, which is listed on the National Register of Historic Places and is owned by the City of Belleville, has been the dream of supporters for the past twenty-one years. The potential buyers of one-twenty-three to one-twenty-seven Mascuta have a dream to bring new ideas and uses to the property. We ask that the dominant view of proposed changes be within the scope of the Historic Preservation Ordinance and the Design Guideline Manual. This request is based on questions about the various proposed uses of one-twenty-three Mascuta. These include golf carts, pop-ups, kiosks, market, et cetera, and how they will blend within the historic preservation context. The proposed front facade of one-twenty-seven Mascuta is complementary to the eighteen-eighties period of its construction. However, the design will be reviewed by the Historic Preservation Commission. The proposed uses are about fifty feet from the Kerner House. Fred and Barbara Kern were early supporters of rehabilitation of the house, and hundreds of donors over the past twenty-one years have supported the dream of recognizing one of Belleville's early dreamers, Gustav Kerner. His dream was to eliminate slavery and protect the rights of immigrants. We ask the new dreamers blend their proposals with the older dreamers to enhance the Old Belleville Historic District. Sincerely, Jack LaSheen and Molly McKenzie, which are co-chairs of the Gustav Kerner House Committee. So I'd like to submit this into the record. Anything else? Okay, hearing none. We'll go continue with public participation. Carol?
Yes.
My name is Carol Bartle. Do I have to give my hat this?
No, that's all right.
And this is Stephanie Doris. We are co-directors of Art on the Square. First of all, I want to say thank you to the city because the last four days, we have really tried to showcase your city. And tonight, we are bringing the original poster to the city for the two thousand and twenty-two show so that you can hang it wherever you want. And we thank you again.
Thank you. Job well done. Okay, let's move on. Do we have anyone else here with discussion for public discussion for other things? Yes, sir.
Good evening. Hi, White Johnson with Shoehorn Brewing. The business is at two-two-five East Main. I live at two-seven-one-three Brook Run Drive here in Belleville. I'm here to speak about and against motion eleven-D-two in regards to specialty licenses for alcohol. My understanding is that the reason for the change to limit five specialty, special event licenses was to help curb the shutting down of the main street for special events through offside streets to help create a balance between the retail establishments and the bar and restaurant establishments, which I am a part of. I completely understand that. I think we all need to have balance, and we shouldn't be shutting down the street every weekend. It makes no sense. That being said, I do not believe that should be done through limiting special event licenses. I believe that should be handled through the Streets and Parks Department so they can handle those on their own, their own process. By limiting the special event licenses themselves, you're limiting business owners from going out to other locations to sell their alcohol in those spots. Madam Mayor, you brought up the marketplace that you, who you establish. If, like they do in entire Grove Farmer's Market, where they have Four Hands Brewing set there selling canned beer, if I wanted to do that, I would have to get a special event license for every time I did that. So if I did that once a month, that is a very quickly, and that I would no longer be able to do the Chili Fest, Saint Patrick's Day stuff, anything where I had to go outside of my business, I wouldn't be able to participate in those. And that's just me. So I know when you're looking at Belleville as a whole, yeah, well, you know, someone on the east side or someone on the west side aren't going to burn through five licenses, who cares? I get that, but it does affect other businesses as well, and businesses I'm not aware of. I know that there's one downtown on West Main who has a mobile cart, like a horse cart that's converted into a small bar to get to events. Being that she has a normal business license, she wouldn't be a caterer, she's got to get a special event license for that to go to a wedding, that burns one of her five licenses for the year. So I implore you to not pass this ordinance, instead pass the power on to the Streets and Parks Department for the until- for then to link that as AC fit.
Thank you. We'll discuss it when the ordinance comes up. Next. Would you come forward?
Thank you, Mayor Gregory. I'm Keith Olent, two fifteen Albin Street. Um, I sent this letter today, uh, to Alder Lady Steele and Alderman Rothweiler concerning, uh, the proposal that is going to be going into one, uh, twenty three and one twenty seven, um, Mascota Avenue. I would like to share in a very brief, if if, thank you. I would like to share with you some of my concerns about the purchase and proposal of this property from the city, from the city to the Avenue Team. This is in no means against the Avenue Team's business or shareholders, but a few concerns and questions about the proposal that is being presented tonight to City Council Meeting. It appears that the community was not given ample time to create a proposal or collect resources, finances, stakeholders for this property. The perception is that the Avenue Team has been working on a proposal of this property for six months and has an entire staff ready for this new venture. This information came from Kathy Mordini's personal Facebook page when she presented this proposal to the community. The per- the perception of this proposal process makes it seem that deals have been made behind closed doors and equal access to this property has not been given to the public at large. Number two, this proposal has not gone through the Belleville Preservation, Historical Preservation Commission. This is a type, the type of proposal that is required to go through the commission for approval prior to going to the City Council. If the purchase and proposal is approved at the City Council Meeting tonight, it could propose, propose an approval at the City Council Meeting tonight. It could be seen as a proposal has already gone through the proper steps and the approval of the commission. Then if this proposal is approved tonight and then the representatives of the ad- the Avenue Team come to the commission for approval of this proposal, the commission will feel pressured to approve the proposal because it has already had City Council approval. And the commission will be viewed as the afterthought with little to no recourse of the Avenue Team if the commission does not approve part or whole of this proposal. Third, the proposal does not give a clear business plan or timeline of completion. The proposal is a sixty-plus-page proposal with fifty-five pages of advertisement for the Avenue Team and five pages of vague description of what their plan for the building and adjoining property is. Number four, the proposal does not give a clear plan, safety plan, for this property. The proposal shares a possible usage for the lot of the north side of the building at one twenty seven Mascota to create permanent booths and pavilions for temporary vendors. What plans are in place for security and prevention of the homeless from moving from the pavilion on the corner of Mascota Avenue and East Main? The surrounding neighborhood has been dealing with the homeless situation for years and I see this as an additional issue that has to be fully addressed as part of this proposal. And lastly, the proposal does not address the actions that will be taken by the A- Avenue Team to limit the additional noise and parking situation limitations that this venue will draw to the seemingly quiet neighborhood. For example, if Albin Street has cars parked on both sides of the street, the shallow width of the street would be very difficult for vehicles to drive down. This in turn will make it impossible for neighbors to be able to exit their driveways. In addition, there is no start time stated of outdoor and indoor music will be completed. And these issues should be addressed in this proposal. Now, please know, I am in full support of these properties to be developed and excited about the enhancement of this corner of Mascota and Albin. I would just like these concerns and questions to be known and taken in consideration prior to the vote.
Thank you. Anybody else for public participation? Yes.
Thank you, ma'am. My name is Mark Erickson. I live at six oh nine Devonshire. And I'm here for that eleven D dealing with cannabis dispensaries. I'm going to be honest with you all. I think this is a great idea. I mean, legitimately, we have gas stations, we got liquor stores, we got bars all over the place in this town. I can walk from my house to a bar, liquor store, gas station, get whatever I need. I would love to be able to walk down the street, pick up some cannabis and walk back home. Or if we have a place that we can go to and I can smoke with other people that enjoy the same as me. That way I can share with the community, hang out with friends. Like lady said, back when we hit with this whole COVID, we haven't been able to hang out. I mean, hell, all we do nowadays is just play video games and stay at home. Why not deal with our friends outside? I mean, places like that this gentleman's trying to bring into our town. It's a great idea. All these towns are making a ton of money. Why shouldn't Belleville? We can use this money for our township. Get more police, get more firefighters or first responders. Make, give them better pay, help them with benefits. Making those kinds of taxes out of our town from get-off, this would be amazing for Belleville. But I just want to let you guys know that I am completely for this. I hope that you guys are for it too.
Thank you very much. Any more people for public comments? Hearing none, we will close public comments at this time. And I'd like to do a presentation. And that presentation is a proclamation about our high school senior recognition month. So whereas families, friends, neighbors and educators should encourage everyone to focus on the abilities of all students and honor their hard work. And whereas the graduating seniors and educators of Altoth Catholic High School, Belleville East High School, Belleville West High School and Governor French Academy have greatly contributed in our, to our community. And whereas the most effective way to increase awareness to the value of education and to honor graduating seniors is through our openness to learn and acknowledge everyone's abilities, talents, the importance of education and show our appreciation for all those committed to educating our children. And whereas our students represent a bright future and will continue along the path of service and leadership in our community and our nation. And whereas we encourage all citizens to support opportunities for graduating seniors in our community, including furthering their education, military service, trades, housing, employment and recreational activities. Now therefore, I, Patty Gregory, Mayor of the City of Belleville, Illinois, do hereby proclaim the month of May twenty twenty two as High School Senior Recognition Month and recognize the high achievement of graduating members of the class of twenty twenty two and offer our heartfelt congratulations. And we challenge all students to fulfill their goal and their dreams. In witness whereof, I have here unto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Belleville to be affixed this sixteenth day of May twenty twenty two. Thank you. And we will make sure that all the high schools get a copy of the proclamation. Thank you very much. Okay, now we need approval of minutes. A motion to approve the City Council Meeting Minutes from April eighteenth, twenty twenty two and May second, twenty twenty two.
Here is a move. Schaefer, second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Uh, now claims, payroll and dispersments. This is a motion to approve claims and dispersments in the amount of four million, one hundred eighty-four thousand, five hundred and sixty-four dollars and eighteen cents and payroll in the amount of one million, one hundred and thirty-three thousand, four hundred and seventy-one dollars and sixty-four cents. Do I have a motion and second?
Schaefer, so moved.
Elmore.
Thank you. Discussion. Roll call. Hazel.
Aye.
Whitaker.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
Eris.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Dillman.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Rothweiler.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wygon.
Aye.
Ostoff.
Aye.
Thank you. And now for reports. Uh, we need a motion to approve the Treasurer's Report uh, from March twenty twenty two and Statement of Cash and Investment Reports, March twenty twenty two. Motion. Thank you. Second.
Schaefer.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now oral reports from standing committees, special committees and any other oral reports from the elected officials or staff. Let's start with Alderman Randall from Streets and Grades.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, folks, if it's all right with you, I'm going to read these things separately. Eleven A one, motion to approve Hank's Excavating and Landscaping Incorporated, lowest responsive bidder in the amount of six hundred fifty-seven thousand, eighty-two dollars and thirty-five cents for improvements to West A Street, eighth through tenth and thirteenth through seventeenth, which consist of resurfacing, replacement of concrete curb entrance and reconstruction of all sidewalks. Ramps will be constructed to ADA standards at roadway intersections, CDBG funds. So moved.
Arrow, second.
Discussion. Yes.
Mayor, I understand the next one with the emergency repair, but I have a question on this one. I thought we had moved away from the practice of items being heard at Streets and Grades and immediately coming to council. This was just discussed like forty-five minutes ago. Is there a reason this one's being expedited to council tonight?
They actually should all be coming the week after. Sal submitted both of them as emergency procedures. He can respond to that.
Well, I mean, I feel like I wooed the ladies.
You guys have allowed to come back downstairs.
I I follow the problem up here. Ultimately, uh, the the concern I had was the seriousness of the problem that we have with these undermining of of pavement. Uh, my concern is that if we have one or two more rains, it could be mighty essential. And so it's it's just that it's my intuitive, my experience that I'm relying on here that I'm asking you folks to rely on. So two weeks may make a difference. Obviously, you're in the blood of the body. You say, no, if you don't, you want to wait two weeks, then you wait two weeks.
I understand that on the undermining for the emergency repairs on the storm sewer, but does that same problem exist with the West A Street for the Hank's Excavating?
Uh, it it does, not for undermining. That's a different, uh, different, uh, it just happened to happen on the same time schedule. The he's pressured to get the time. I asked him to get the job done, uh, quick. And, uh, I felt I need to give him two weeks. Two weeks could be a significant amount of time. I think that the residents want their, like, the vibe to show some progress on the, on the thing. And that's a judgment on my part that if we can get him two weeks, then fine. If you don't get him two weeks, uh, obviously it's it's your privilege not to, not to approve the two weeks, but that's the reasoning behind it.
I I appreciate that. I just wanted to see some explanation on why we were deviating back to. And I don't want that to become a, a current practice again. But I do support the engineer's discussions and I'll support this motion moving forward.
Okay. Any more discussion? Okay. Roll call. Whitaker.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
Eris.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Dillman.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Rothweiler.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wygon.
Aye.
Ostoff.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to eleven A two. Uh, motion to approve emergency repairs to storm sewers located near twenty-seven ninety Brook Meadow, thirty-two Marlow Drive, three twenty-three and three twenty-seven Meadowlark Lane in an amount not to exceed one hundred seventy thousand dollars and to waive formal bidding procedures, ARPA funds. So moved.
Arrow, second. Okay, any discussion? Yes, Mr. Wygon?
Okay, I brought it up in Streets and Grades and I'm bringing it up again. This Brook Mill, that is a contractor that came in and did a terrible job. Did not get inspected, did the job wrong and now getting stuck with the bill. The same with the archer, they've got archer grounds, they have the, uh, streets. Well, they poured the concrete, no, no rock underneath, nothing, just on the dirt. And now they're going to get stuck with that. We need to, these contractors come in, should be bonded and put a bond on them for five to ten years. If they do terrible work, if they're going to come back, fix it, or the bonds they want to pay for instead of us paying for this all the time. We could use this money someplace else.
And I think we would all like to use it someplace else.
Here we are, another, another project is going to go. And then they're going to have another amount there behind Walmart. I know that's all undermined, they built that subdivision back there behind there. That's all going to collapse, I'm going to give it ten years. You know, uh, Walmart itself spent the money in front to put slag in the ground so it wouldn't sink. But behind there, they didn't do nothing, they just built it there. And the, and the, uh, uh, streets are starting to give now. Who's going to pay for that?
And in fact, we just had a wonderful Streets and Grades Committee meeting before we came here tonight. And, uh, this was brought up. Uh, Sal Elcott and Dennis, I think you were both of the same mindset. And so these are all good things for discussion that we really need to change some of the way we approach things that have been done in the past and make sure that we're getting the biggest bang for our buck and not stuck with something down the road.
We should be on top of it when they're doing it.
You're exactly right.
We should be sure they're doing the job right and not shut it down until they do the job right.
I totally agree.
And here we are, stuck with another hundred and seventy thousand. They're urging to give more money again. And we could use some money on the basis of our, our streets and borough, you know? You just, you know?
And you both brought up a very important point. And I totally am in favor of that.
Thank you.
Your will. So do we have any more discussion? Roll call. Duco.
Aye.
Eris.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Dillman.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Rothweiler.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wygon.
Aye.
Ostoff.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Whitaker.
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, now another motion from administration. I need a mo- mo- a motion to approve twenty twenty-two Committees and Commissions' calendar.
Ferguson.
Arrow, second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. A motion to purchase one oh seven East D Street, parcel zero eight dash twenty-two, zero dash three oh two dash zero one two from the Saint Clair County Tax Agent in the amount of seven hundred ninety-five dollars for demolition or infill project.
Arrow, so moved. Schaefer, second.
Discussion. Hearing none, roll call. Eris.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Dillman.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Rothweiler.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.[1701.94]
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wygon.
Aye.
Ostoff.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Whitaker.
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor. Thank you. A motion to approve an amended development agreement with MG and FG Group LLC for demolition and parking lot expansion at one North Forty-fourth Street and forty-four oh one West Main Street. Motion?
Ferguson.
Second?
Rothweiler.
Any discussion? Yes.
Mayor, this was, uh, a topic that had a lot of debate previously when it came up. Can we understand why the process is being delayed for this project, and, and what the time extension is needed for?
I'd be happy to. Um, good evening, I'm gonna get comfortable here, 'cause I think you'll be up there a lot tonight. But the, the short answer is, you've seen a lot of these redevelopment agreements come back before you because of COVID and supply issues and whatever else, but this is actually an environmental issue. They need to let the soil settle before they move forward. So they are asking for a two-month delay so they can settle and get compacted properly prior to the move. So that's, that's really what it is on this particular.
Thank you.
Okay. Any more discussion? All those, uh, oh, roll call, sorry. Randall.
Epstein.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Dillman.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Rothweiler.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wygon.
Aye.
Ostoff.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Whitaker.
Epstein.
Duco.
Aye.
Eris.
Epstein.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, now, Mr. Whitaker, motions from finance.
We have one together, or? Eleven C one, motion to approve donating sixteen iPads no longer in use to a local school or nonprofit organization. Eleven C two, a motion to approve closing the historic preservation commission savings account and underground storage tank savings account, and eleven C three, motion to approve FY twenty-three budget amendment encumbrance as recommended by the finance director. So moved.
Arrow second. Okay. Uh, a second on these motions? Arrow second. Okay, discussion? Roll call. Ferguson.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Dillman.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Rothweiler.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wygon.
Aye.
Ostoff.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Whitaker.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
Eris.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor. Thank you very much. Now, motions from ordinance and legal review. Alderman's woman, Steele?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, I think I'll read each of these separate.
Okay.
This is controversial. Um, motions from ordinance and legal review. Eleven D one, motion to amend Title Nine General Regulations, Chapter ninety-three nuisances, Section ninety-three point zero eight zero definitions.
Okay.
Randall, so moved.
Thank you, discussion? Arrow second. Is any discussion on this?
Uh, Mayor.
Yes.
Could we get an explanation of the change in definition that's not in our category?
Yes, would you like to address that?
It's in the ordinance.
Oh, from the police department.
This is, if you look at the ordinance that accompanies it, which is fifteen A, at the last ordinance and legal committee, Captain Keelbach had asked, when we changed some lighting and luminaire things, that we add these three definitions, and so we had to bring it back to add those. So it's ordinance number?
Uh, ninety.
Ninety forty-six. Which is fifteen A in your packet. So those three definitions were not within the ordinance prior, and they requested they be added.
Okay, any more discussion? Roll, uh, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and motion carries.
Eleven D two, motion to amend Title eleven Business Regulations, Chapter one-two-one Alcoholic Beverages, Section one-twenty-one point zero eight Specialty Licenses.
Motion?
That's the motion we need to fill out.
Okay, discussion?
Yes, I have a question. So we kind of talked about this a little bit in legal and ordinance, I believe, that we discussed about when a business goes off private premises and, uh, maybe they set up a bar or golf course, or an example was given about a brewery doing a farmer's market type of event. So, am I correct that that does count as one event for that license usage? That's one, now they're down to four, and then St. Pat's down to three, and that would leave them three other events. And they have four other farmer's markets to participate in, they may never have a chance to ask for a special event license to do something outside their business, right on their sidewalk or off their sidewalk, and close street, that's all correct?
Well, the special event licenses for, uh, either a licensed, somebody who already has a license and wants to go off, uh, their premises to a designated premises outside of their original license premises, or somebody who doesn't have a retail license, who just wants to have a special event, like a, you know, I'm gonna have a fundraiser, I can get a, a one-day license. Now, the difference is, we call them both special event licenses, but the, the former, in the context of what the state licenses, that's called a special use permit license, so you have to go get that from the state, and, and so what you're talking about, an example, is, is that, somebody who is a current license holder, wants to go off their premises, they get both a local special event license and they get a special use permit license from the state. Uh, it wouldn't count if they have a caterer's license and the service of the alcohol was incidental to the service of food. So that's a separate designation. So, in your example, if I was gonna go down to a golf course and set up a bar and I'm licensed elsewhere within the city, that would be a special event license.
Unless they had a caterer's license.
But if I was gonna serve food and the alcohol incident to the service of that food, I would get a caterer's license, so it would not count against a special license limitation.
And I agree with the five licenses on, I, I think that's the perfect number, with all the bars, uh, doing this, I think five is the right number. But like I said, will we drop that up the other night, and, and hearing another business saying, I may never have a chance if I do this farmer's market thing? So that's not considered caterer.
Well, I'm not, I don't believe in the vision of the city market is going to be selling beer or any alcohol there, so.
So, I have to clarify, please?
Yes. I, I'm, okay, so, has the vision for the city market already been discussed with all of us? We, we have a committee. Cause I'm just gonna say, here's. I'm just going to say, Shelley, we have a committee that has been working on this, and we are, we will be bringing it to council with the whole concept, so you, we can present it at a council meeting, and of course, then we would have to vote if to proceed on it, because we would, it's a city-owned building, there would have to be some things that are, are involved as far as, like, skylights up above that have been closed up, and things like this. So it definitely would have to be brought before, but it's basically another part of, like, a farmer's market. Bellevue Main Street talked to us about it, as I said early in my administration, because the situation there is, they're having terrible trouble getting people to donate their time to come up, set up those tents every morning, and then take everything down, and so they do not feel that the market is going as far as it could go. So that's how this discussion all came. And I, I understand that, but my thing is, if you go to some of the St. Louis, they do have microbreweries coming in and selling their product, and it does draw a large number of people there. So I think we have to keep our vision. We need to put you on the committee, Shelley, to help with it. We'd love to have you on the committee to help with it. But, but I think we do need to keep that vision open, and if that is going to cut into, I don't know if we can come up with something, some other license for them at that point, or, but it could be an ordinance change if the city market does come, does come to pass and things are decided. Yes. But even if it, I'm not, I'm, the city market for me is the no-go until it's here at council, that's just a, a dream, and that's great, but I'm talking about the, the other events that we have around here, they're already here, they're, you know, they're not just here, they're in O'Fallon, and they're in Fairview, and Trilo, I mean, so he's limited then. He's done, then. If he does a, a city market once a month, or even like the Vine Street Market, like, they do theirs every Saturday, and then he's gone. Whoever brought it up, I'm, sorry, whoever brought it up that it should go to Jason as far as the street closures, cause that's what's bothering everybody, really.
That's apples and oranges, though, that's why we had to keep focusing at ordinance and legal meeting, and bringing everybody back to the fact that no more than five special liquor licenses for the outside. If you're inside and have a business, you can sell as much as you want, but if we have Chili Cook-Off, um, Oktoberfest, those other events, those people are making their money selling on the streets.
Yeah, and I understand that, but I'm, but then we're limiting people, like.
They can do whatever they want inside.
But they can't go to anything else. She's, and I get where you're coming from, so say there was a golf tournament, and they wanted to be a sponsor for them, they can't go do that. They can't. I mean, unless they wanna use one of their five. Yeah.
If I, if I could just clarify one thing, in this conversation, um, please be reminded that this is licensing within the city of Bellevue. So if somebody wants to go to the, uh, Vine Street Market in O'Fallon, they're gonna have to go to O'Fallon and get a license, this limitation doesn't apply.
No, I understand that, I'm just saying, like, O'Fallon does it, every, their market is every weekend, so if we have a mark, you know, we have a, a farmer's market here too, already, that's out there in the heat, um, but I mean, they can't then. No, 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 he can't sell his alcohol outside his business at the farmer's market on the weekend without a specialty license, correct?
We're not.
Anybody who sells alcohol anywhere in the city has to have a license to do so, that's what we're saying.
Right. So he's gonna go someplace else, is what I'm saying, and then that money goes someplace else. I don't know, I just, I think it's. Yes.
Mayor, if our concern with this was to limit the amount of time businesses are requesting street closures, that, that's the majority of what I have heard is the biggest complaints from, a- and I don't represent either of the wards up and down the areas that's having this, so I'm, I'm leaning to your guys' expertise on that, but i- if that's what we're focused on doing, is there a different way to say that you can only have five special event licenses that include a street closure? I mean, i- is there, is there a way to, to do this better?
I think also it was, they were selling during, like, Chili Cook-Off out on the street, I don't think that should happen, that is a not-for-profit thing going on then. But I get this gentleman's point on if we were having some kind of fair or something that, he, that's his business, he's selling a, it's a microbrewery that he's selling, kinda like forty-two oh four used to. He can't do that now in the city of Bellevue. He can't go to any event and sell his product. Well, he can outside of the city, but if it's inside, if it's inside, it would be a special use, uh, license, but we also have to remember, we're trying to set a balance between retail and bars and, and restaurants.
And at the meeting, wh- when we discussed it economic development, it was fi- say there's ten to twelve bar and restaurants, five a year, you're, there're sixty or more special permits, and that's plenty.
At different times.
At different times. We thought that was plenty for the city.
And one, some have requested ten events, which would be over a hundred days of closing possibility, of over a hundred days of street closures.
And the, the street closure idea, that's a separate, when they have to hand in their paperwork for this, that's a separate venue that Jenny reviews about the street closures.
Dennis?
Mayor, I think five is plenty, and here we go again, what is it costing the city every time they close a street down? You send two guys out, put it all down, two guys pack and put it all down, and drop six, seven, eight hundred dollars, are paying free. Is retail paying that, is he paying the eight hundred dollars? No, or paying the eight hundred dollars to close the streets down? Well, I got two of ours, as far as my ward, I've got cutters and, and, simple creep, cutters came the other day, if it goes down Far Law Avenue, I wanna have an event, like they do up to sit, because was be right here, was have share, you know, was to show discrimination, I want my time closed too. Now, where do we stop, you know? And I, I'm just saying, I think if, if, uh, you should start charging for the streets to be closed.
But the bottom.
That's my opinion.
But the bottom line is, it wasn't about a street closure for him, it's, he's selling a product. He's a, he's a microbrewery that is trying to sell a product, he's not a bar. I mean, he's producing something, so it's kinda like, if you produced a piece of art, you're gonna go to fairs, and you're gonna wanna sell that, that piece of art. So, that is where I'm having, i- i- it's not about us having outdoor, I, I'm just thinking about this gentleman who has a product he's trying to sell, not for someone else, it's something he's making, and so what we're telling him is, not, I, I agree with the five special use permits, but for a gentleman like this who's producing a product, we're telling him that, no, he can't go sell his product at an event, i- it could be a farmer's market, he can't go sell that product, he's gotta go somewhere out of our town to do that. Yes.
This is for Garrett. Garrett, can he buy, uh, a license, like, uh, a grave I have, to distribute the beer?
It's a separate licensing by the state for distribution of.
And he can distribute it anywhere.
For, for, uh, microbreweries, and it's all relative to the capacity and the production, and, um, you know, this is strictly if, and I don't know enough about his particular license, whether or not he's going to have a group of license where he serves beer in a bar like forty-two oh four's original restaurant did, or some other type of, of license or, and/or a distribution license, you know, microbreweries are, are handled differently.
I would think maybe there was a license.
But as far as, a, if he had one or more of those licenses, and he was able to serve, uh, his, his beer on the premises, to go off the premises, to serve at any type of, anywhere off the premises, it would require a special event liquor license from the city, and this would, this limits that annually to five in a calendar year. I don't know, I, I, we've, we've been speaking about this, particular one, in kind of generalities, I don't know what function he would go to, uh, maybe, if you, it's up to you.
Sorry, just to, just a little clarity here, if I did get a distributor's license like you're asking about, if I could drink my beer somewhere, I could do that, but I still couldn't sell it there, it's a separate license, so I could take it to a bar, and that bar could sell it, but I still would not be able to sell it as a distributor, distributor is just a distribute. You don't actually sell by the glass, to make that clear. Now, that aside, I think we're honestly getting a little in the mud here about who the issue really is, is just, to me, is you're adding additional ordinances for something that could be effectively controlled through the Streets and Parks Department, because our issue seems to me that it's all about traffic, and all about street closures, and all about things that they handle. So we empower them to do their job, and let them do what they're supposed to do, and not add additional ordinances that have far-reaching issues, which affect me, like you said, farmer's markets, golf course events, any sort of charity that I want to sponsor, not to go to their place to pour my beer, I have to do it, if I wanna sell me a beer for that. And yes, I could go out of town, I could go to O'Fallon, I could go to Swansea, I could go any other place I want to and do that, get a license from them, but I wanna do it here, in my town, where my brewery exists, where my beer's made, and support my community. So, please don't hinder me, just for the sake of making sure we can't shut down the streets in downtown, that makes no sense, please just let the Streets and Parks Department handle that part.
Uh, Mr. Rothweiler, I believe you had your hand up before Mr. Randall?
I did, there were, the closure of streets and special licenses are two different issues. They tend to go together at times by the bar owner asking for the street to be shut down. We talked about this in ordinance meeting, they're two different things. I could shut down the street, I don't need a special license, audience approval accounts to do so. I could shut down the street, I don't need a special license, audience approval accounts to do so. So there are two different things. I agree with Alderman Whitaker in that, is there some way that we could go back and look at this? To say that in special license, in conjunction with a street closure is limited to X number, whatever that is. Rather than a massive impact on this, and a business impact, this gentleman and others, there are others, not just him, that have this issue as well.
And we also have the retailers too that, that need to be considered.
Right.
Yes. Mr. Randall?
Yes, Mayor, I would like to make a motion to table the discussion for this evening and have it taken back to ordinance and legal for further review.
I'll say it, Mayor.
Okay, any discussion?
Mayor, uh, I think it would probably be behoove of either you or, or Garrett to give Bob Gravy a call. Bob has purchased forty-two oh four from Todd Kennedy. Now, as of two weeks ago Friday, they weren't brewing any of their own beer. They were serving food, but I don't know what the makeup is, is gonna be and when they officially are gonna start brewing their own beer. And so, we need to talk to him, and if you table it, it gives us a chance to find out the real story.
Okay.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor and a second to table, motion to amend title eleven, business regulations, chapter one twenty-one, alcoholic beverages.
Yes, and is there any more discussion from anyone? Okay.
The motions you refer, you can add to, uh, the committee takes precedence, we have the board on that person.
Okay, so we need a new motion.
No, you gotta.
Oh, talk about the motion by Kent, sorry.
Thirty seconds, that's on the motion.
Okay, let's call for a, a vote.
Vote, tell, we're voting on a motion, I made the motion up, correct?
To table.
No, my motion was to approve.
This says the table is superseded.
So under your council rules, uh, motions you refer, back to the committee, takes precedence, over and motion approved. So you have to vote on that one first and see whether or not it passes. But then if it doesn't pass, you vote on yours, if it does pass, it's back.
So we're vot- voting right now on table, okay, gotcha.
Uh, reverse second.
And sending it back, okay.
And we have a second from?
I have a motion from Alderman Randall and a second from Alderman Rothweiler to table and refer back to.
Okay, any more discussion on tabling? All those in favor?
Let's do it over.
Oh, roll call on this, okay, we can do that.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dillman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wygon?
Aye.
Ostoff?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Eris?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Okay, let's proceed on.
Okay, um, eleven D three, motion to amend title eleven, business regulations, chapter one twenty-three, adult use cannabis, section one twenty-three point zero zero eight. Adult use cannabis dispensing organization.
Randall, second.
Eris, second. Okay, discussion?
Mayor, I, uh, I appreciate the, the income a dispensary would bring to our city. I, I was at zoning, this, this was discussed heavily and presentations made were great. And, and I do think this has a place in our city, where my concern lies in, in section A three that was added, which changes the way we hold the tape measure as it comes to, uh, this type of, this type of event. Whereas such distances shall be measured linearly and shall be measured along a public path of travel from property line to property line. The requirements under this division shall not be subject to variance. Uh, the, the concern I have here is, we are, we're making a carve-out to support a single property. But how does that affect us later on when somebody wants to put a dispensary i- in another area very close to a residential neighborhood? Um, a- and where do we draw the line? If we're changing the way we hold the tape measure for a dispensary, are we gonna change the way we hold the tape measure for a liquor license when it comes to, we just had to modify a distance because of, of that same thing? Or, you know, does it get to where we hold the tape measure for a sex offender in our city? I know those are extreme measures, but I, I don't think the way to solve this problem and make this property work is changing the way we have to walk the line to make sure the, the distance is over what's in our ordinance. We didn't ask to change the ordinance to less than four hundred feet, but now instead of walking property to property, we have to go down the road to find the next business road to turn left on and come back to this property. Again, I support, uh, the development of what we need in our city, I think this organization that, that's doing this is great, I don't feel this is the right property. And because of A three, I, I, I don't support this one.
Okay.
Mayor.
Ovian?
The economic development went ahead and adopted eight zones, none of which basically were close to residence. As you can see on South Seventy-fourth Street at that oncology center. If we go ahead and adopt this this evening, what we've done is allow Ward Three not to do their due diligence. We have section one fifty-five point oh seven five, unsafe or unlawful street graphics. This should have been done, therefore anything that, this, the light there that hasn't been lit since I've been an alderman prior to that, and I've been an alderman for seven years. Secondly, the property, you could have gone ahead and used eighty-two thirty-seven dash two thousand eighteen vacant property ordinance to get rid of the building. We gotta start enforcing the codes in order to make things work in our city. I'm sorry, but we're not doing a very good job of enforcing properties so people can come to Belleville and wanna stay. Thank you.
Any more discussion? Yes, Mr. Randall?
Mayor, I would ask the Director of Economic Development to explain the rationale for, uh, the measuring.
So, you see it different ways, valid points, all of you, um, here's sign code, here's property maintenance code, I definitely hear the measurement tool. I've seen it done different ways, it's traditionally, it's intent, when you talk about zoning ordinances and ordinances to separate incompatible uses, such as issues from residential. So our ordinance is actually regulating ad- adult use cannabis through two different sections of the code. One twenty-three, which is business regulations, and then also through the zoning ordinance, one sixty-two. And the logic behind it was, what was the intent of the zoning code, how you separated that? In this particular property, you would physically have to go off the property, walk around a public right of way before you hit the front of, of a, a residential property that in a sense could be impacted by it, that was our interpretation on the intent. That actually measured well over five hundred and seventy feet. In this particular case, you would have to run through the building, run through the commercial buildings and hit the residential property that probably never sees it. Valid argument though, it's always, it's always been the case, as the crow flies, or how do you get there, through the intent? So I, I definitely understand that argument in terms of how, how do you separate it? So that was the logic behind it, we thought that it met the intent of the ordinance and that this separation was appropriate to protect the residential property. The one thing I do wanna note though, when you look at our ordinance and it came out of the ordinance committee, so it talks about the four hundred foot separation from a residentially zoned district. We have a lot of residential uses in the city that have achieved that, either as being a legal non-conforming use grandfather, basically. Or was established through, my favorite one, the use variance, which I'm not. And the point I'm making is, those can be established residential uses in a commercially zoned district. So theoretically, the way the ordinance is currently written, you could put a dispensary right next to a multifamily development. So I'm not disagreeing with that, if that's the way you wanna measure it, that's good. But at the very least, we have to ask that that section of the code gets revisited and gets readdressed to make sure that we do not get it. Now, the other part of this is that we were gonna move the number of licenses from two to three, logic have one on the west side, central and out on the east side. If the intent of this ordinance was to keep it on the boundaries of the city and out of the urban core, then you don't want to approve this amendment. So, um, that's, that's the logic behind the proposal we brought to you tonight, I'd be happy to answer any questions at your end.
Brian, Mr. Whitaker?
My, a- and I appreciate what you're saying, and again, I'm not speaking in opposition of bringing these to our city, but if we change an ordinance today, we know what, we know what the effect is on the property we're looking at today.
Exactly.
We don't know what the effect is on any neighborhood that the rest of us represent when the next dispensary comes in that wants to go four hundred feet by the public roadway away from one of those.
What I can tell you is, we did do an analysis through our GIS and the impact was, would be minimal, is, is what we found. We thought we were still meeting the original intent of the ordinance. But, like I said, I think the question becomes, if, what was the original intent of the order? I can't answer that, I wasn't here, but was it to put them on the outskirts and did you want only two? And then, how's that work? So I, I think those are the, the questions that you probably wanna answer.
Mr. Elmore?
And we had, uh, we need to settle where the dispensers could go, we limited it to two, and we have one right now, as you sit here tonight, correct?
Correct.
And this is the second one, and the areas that we designated over fifteen months ago, uh, does this second application fall in one of those areas that we pre-designated as a retail dispensary store?
It does not. But there is interest in one of those areas.
Regardless of what for the deed through a building, round the corner, whatever, this is not in the original sections that we pre-approved.
Correct, agreed, based on the measurement, yes, sir.
Yes, Mr. Ovian?
Mayor, one of the things that we have not done, and, and God forbid if we pass this, cause Beltline and West Main Street at forty-six hundred is my worst nightmare. And it, basically, we've not done a traffic study. We don't know when the peak period is or if there is no peak period. Honest to God, who's gonna go ahead and direct traffic? Are you gonna go ahead, we gonna charge the people to go ahead and, and employ off-duty police officers? Who's gonna go ahead and handle people running red lights?
Uh, Mayor, I'd like to hear from the older wom- men in that ward.
Okay.
You wanna go first?
We would.
Um, I think what we're talking about here is an ordinance, an amending an ordinance, okay, as opposed to, you know, the specific location. But if you wanna direct the, the conversation to the specific location, to the questions around traffic and traffic studies. Um, C of a, CBS Pharmacy has the same egress and ingress, okay, as this location would have. This location had that same issue, okay, when it served as a gas station many, many decades ago. Yes, it's been vacant for a long time. We see an opportunity here to repurpose a building, and I think you have in front of you on your tables tonight, a conceptual, uh, drawing, if you will, of what that corner could look like. Is that area of the city kind of depressed right now specifically because of that particular building? Absolutely it is. Could this be a, uh, a catalyst, to use the mayor's term, from a previous meeting, that could help that area? Um, I believe that it very well could be, it could probably spark investment with the, um, ownership that remains with respect to that particular plaza. The traffic issues as described here also pertain, okay, to the, um, beauty supply store that is still under construction so many years later. I was having a conversation with Alderman Ferguson, uh, this afternoon, and I told him I had a bet with myself because I can't find anybody else to take it. But I think that we approved this, okay, this building could be renovated up and running before the beauty supply store is completed. Now, uh, I've addressed the traffic issue, okay, I've, uh, taken a look at, you know, parking. I had a conversation with the, uh, um, people from, um, uh, Progress Equity in terms of obtaining a parking easement, okay, from neighboring businesses there that could solve any parking issues that one might perceive could take place. The other thing that I would mention to you is that this particular location is on a transit line, okay? It offers people who don't have their own transportation a means of getting to and from that location to satisfy their prescription or other needs. Recreational, um, to be blunt, okay? Um, other locations that we have off of South Seventy-fourth Street, uh, I went by there again, uh, this afternoon, there's no bus stop there. I don't know how many people can afford Uber and the, uh, product as well at, uh, on the same trip. So I would think that having a location, okay, that is on a transit line benefits the city. We know that having one location is going to bring in revenue, I think having two could add revenue to our tax base as well. The reason for adjusting or amending the ordinance from two locations to three dispensary locations allows us to take advantage of the east end of the city as well. So to the point of, you know, uh, location, 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 so we'd be on Route fifteen, we would be on West Main Street and the Beltline. And we would also be hopefully located on the east end of town someplace that would be within the confines of the ordinance as it's drafted this evening. If you so, uh, would choose to, uh, approve it. I understand that people have objections, whether they be religious, moral objections to the use of the product. I also understand that there are objections, okay, from those who would say is like, you know what? Do I want to approve something that might feed somebody's addiction? I don't know that I've ever met somebody that was addicted to marijuana, certainly other, uh, products they become addicted to as well. But, um, have I dealt with addiction within my own family, abuse? Yes, I have, and, uh, I seen what that abuse can do, but it wasn't as a result of marijuana use or cannabis use. So I think that there's a number of positive reasons for why we should go ahead and approve this ordinance this evening. I understand, okay, the concerns about, well, how do we measure the thing? But to the point that the Director of Economic Development, uh, made is like, you know, you can't move a building, okay? In order to, you know, get that out of the way so you can have line of sight to it. So if you're thinking as the crow fly, none of us here can fly, okay? You've gotta take the path, okay? And that path, okay, gets you to almost five hundred and eighty feet. So, those are my remarks this evening, thank you very much.
Uh, what I wanna say is, and I respect everything Alderman Randall has said, um, my concerns, as I said, the night of zoning was traffic. Uh, the accessibility, the parking, the location of that intersection, I'm not sure that this is a plus to that intersection. Uh, hearing Alderman Whitaker tonight, the precedent that would be set in always trying to remap things to make it work, uh, when do we stop with that? When, uh, it just seems to start a precedent, uh, I'm not very comfortable with. I am not a cannabis user, and, uh, as we all know, I do work at a church and I do work with people who struggle with addictions. And, um, this is, this is something that many people do struggle with, uh, it's something that I'm, I'm struggling with in the decision process on this. I understand the revenue it brings in the city, um, and I've, I've spoken to these people who are wanting to open this business up, and I, they know where I stand with this. Um, but, uh, I, I'm not in support of it.
Yes, more discussion? I think Ryan had his hand up first and then Bobby.
Okay.
My question is for Director Croft. If this location doesn't work out, do you have the ability to work with this group to help them find a home in, in Belleville?
Sure, I, I can talk to them, because the licenses, so the way the state Illinois does it is they issue so many licenses through, uh, we business the Department of Professional Regulation when it comes to the dispensaries, Department of Agriculture and the State Police and all the cultivation centers and so forth. Um, I mean, yeah, they, the, so the beauty of the way the state wrote it is the state has a lot of regulatory control. So, these uses are held to a higher power, and we appreciate it because they really do perform. The one thing they do do is the state does pass the siding to us and our local ordinances, and, uh, in this case, we regulate it through two avenues, the zoning ordinance and then the business regulations that which actually act as a supplementary regulation. So, the short answer is, yes, they could theoretically look at another site. I think, uh, what I'm hearing, and obviously their, their model is their model, but what I'm hearing is, and we've proven it, cause we've proved one. We're a community that's open to a dispensary, just for logistical reasons, maybe this isn't the best site, in your opinion, area and everybody's opinion.
This group presented a, a great plan at, at economic development, they seem like a very eager group, I like their conceptual drawings. I'm just hung on the fact of changing our ordinance for someone that's not them. For, for someone else that could come in and, and not have the same plan and not have the same, but, but I would like, i- if it doesn't go through, for us to work to, to find them a home in Belleville.
So, that's what, I was gonna ask Director Cross, they would be interested in another location possibly?
Well, they have the eligibility, they would have to answer that question on their behalf.
Okay, right. Well, because on my way here, I, I am a hundred percent in favor of cannabis dispensaries in town, I think it'll bring in great revenue. I'm very excited about the one on fifteen, my concern is also the accessibility, and on my way here, I passed that. And there are eight other vacant buildings on Main Street between there and Thirty-Eighth Street. So, there's opportunity they have, but maybe not at that exact intersection because it is a nightmare, I drive it every day, so do my teenage children. So, um, that would be my concern is. So that would be my concern, is the getting in and out of that particular spot. And then if, you know, the bus line or the transit line on another building on Main Street, that would then help people that can't get there any other way. But I just, I wanted to clarify, because I'm the newbie, but...
I drive by all the time, and, you know, I try to look for sites, for different developments. Ironic, we talked about forty-two oh four, forty-two oh four overflow parking buildings would be a perfect fit.
Right, yeah, that's exactly what, on my way here, I thought. It wouldn't need much, I wouldn't think, and, you know, upgrades, it's fairly new. But that's a private business decision, so I'm just wondering if this gets, whatever happens tonight, if they would still then want to do business in Belleville, because I do think it's definitely an economic driver, the dispensaries, and so I don't want to discourage that at all.
Sure. So I'm gonna, Garrett, not to put you on the spot here, but, so, and this is to the point, Alderman Randall, that we're talking about an amendment that's really not pertaining to the specific use, and I know the applicants are here, and for them to come, and I think they have to do it during their case.
During public participation, but you raise a good point, Director Cross. This amendment is not site-specific. This amendment goes to a number of licenses, limitation, and it goes to how the distances prescribed in the ordinance are measured. Now, while it may resolve a problem related to, or an issue related to one site, the site-specific analysis that you do is the special use permit process, because cannabis dispensaries and all these cannabis uses are not permitted uses, they're special uses. So this site, any other site, has to apply for a special use permit, and at that point, you take into account and consider site-specific issues, traffic circulation pattern, et cetera, et cetera. So I just want to keep in mind that this is broader than just this site. So if you have, this is about the limitation of the number of licenses, and about how distances are measured. If you have site-specific concerns about the site that's been discussed tonight, or and/or any other potential site, that will be, that must be addressed also at a special use permit application process, so I just want to keep that in mind.
Okay, I believe Rafi.
On April the twenty-eighth, that Thursday evening, when zoning was held, I brought up at zoning meeting, and you can check the minutes, this had no business coming up before zoning, because I had a GIS study made, two-hundred-and-seventy-three feet from the nearest residence. They didn't qualify, but zoning went ahead and gave them the extra leeway in order to go ahead and come before the council. You can't have it both ways. When it says four hundred feet, that's what it says in the rules. One-twenty-three point zero zero eight says four hundred feet. So if you're two-hundred-and-seventy-three feet away, you don't meet the necessary requirements.
That is not the zoning code. That is one-twenty-three, which is business regulations, and it clearly states that any use is not allowed to have a variance. And as we talked about at the last meeting, for these uses, the state of Illinois holds them, and I mean they hold them, until they say, you go, and then you're go, and you're on shot clock. So out of timely sensitivity and respect to the applicants, it was made very clear, you can make your zoning application for your special use permit contingent upon the understanding that you would need to have an amendment to Chapter one-twenty-three, which is why it was lined up to come in this order tonight. This is the first one on the agenda before their case is even heard. So they do have a right to make an application via the zoning code, but it has to have the amendment completed prior to any action on the zoning action, which is a special use permit, which says it has to be consistent with one-twenty-three, which would have been amended before the action on the zoning action.
Mr. Elmore.
Can I, in favor of the resale business in the city, I'm in favor of the rule three, I'm still unclear, if we had zones or areas that we predetermined, was that done by ordinance? And if it's not in one of these zones, like Cliff says, it's not in, if it's by ordinance, then are we breaking our own ordinance?
So that was predetermined by one-twenty-three, and not a combination, but the distance separations were predetermined by one-twenty-three. The underlying zoning was determined by one-sixty-two, the C-two commercial zoning, which allows for the application for the special use permit.
It allows for the zones that we set up fifteen, sixteen months ago to be destroyed?
That was a combination, one-twenty-three and one-sixty-two, but that's exactly why we have to have the amendment to one-twenty-three. They're eligible to make an application. I could tell them no all I want, you can't make an application and say, I'm making an application, then you bring it to the BZA and say, well, they made an application, but you know what, they can't meet their distance separation, so we recommend deny it. That's absolutely why we didn't just go in and say, we recommend deny it. That's why we went in and said, they need to have the amendment to one-twenty-three before the special use permit is granted.
One-twenty-three is the cannabis business licensing provision. One-sixty-two is a special use permit.
Correct.
There are two different discussions tonight. This is the amendment to one-twenty-three that's currently on the floor, and that is a modification to the number of licenses, the maximum number of licenses, and the method by which the distances are measured for purposes of the business licenses. Then the zoning is later.
So we're not right?
Okay, shall I read the motion again?
We have a motion. There's been a motion and a second, there's no reading.
And then our packet, it refers to the change in the language.
Correct, it refers to...
So that's what we're voting on?
Mayor?
Yes.
Could I call for the vote, please?
Yes, I think that's what we're going to be doing right here. We've had a lot of discussion, so, roll call? Ovian?
No.
Dittelman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele?
No.
Rothweiler?
No.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wagon?
No.
Ostoff?
No.
Hazel?
Aye.
Whitaker?
No.
Duco?
Aye.
Eris?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
No.
Anthony?
Aye.
I have eight, seven.
So when half of the council, when half of the Alderman vote in favor of a, of an ordinance resolution motion, even though there's no tie vote under Section three-point-one dash forty dash thirty, the mayor can vote?
Okay. I vote no, only because I believe that we need to find a better location. I too am worried about the ingress, egress there, but I'm also concerned about that whole area, and I see the point of upgrading that area, which I believe is important to upgrade, especially on the west end of Belleville. But I also see that there may be opportunities, and hopefully you would consider opportunities with the original ordinance, to be further out towards, out away from residential.
Philly, what's it?
Eight-eight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Mayor?
Um, yes.
Could I call for a short recess, please? Five minutes?
Yes. Are we zooming the meaning?
Does it mean you can't change?
Motion from traffic, Mr. Elmore.
No, it doesn't.
Okay. That's on him.
That's on him, I'm sorry. Motion to agree, no party, in between signs along curb from six-oh-six to six-oh-eight North Church Street, east side, and from five-thirty-nine, six-oh-seven, North Church Street, on the west side, so moved.
Here a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it? Motion from the zoning board, Jenny?
Okay, reading separately, what are we doing, on all of them separate?
We read them together.
I think you're gonna break out eleven-four.
Yeah.
Or eleven-F-four, sorry.
F-four, yes, yeah. I'll read the others. Motion from zoning board, eleven-F-one, fourteen, April twenty-two, Nicole Hethenhauser requests for a use variance to use a portion of accessory building for a hair salon at two-twenty-one Abbot Street, zero-eight, two-seven-zero, two-six, zero-two-eight, located in A-one, single-family residence district. Applicable section to the zoning code, one-six-two point zero-nine-three, one-six-two point five-seven-zero, Ward six, it is therefore the recommendation of the zoning board of appeals that a use variance be approved by unanimous vote of all members present of six to zero. Eleven-F-two, fifteen, April twenty-two, West Haven LLC requests for a special use permit for liquor license and outdoor seating at fifteen thirteen South Illinois Street, zero-eight three-three-zero, two-zero-zero, zero-three-one, located in a C-two heavy commercial district, applicable sections of the zoning code, one-six-two point two-four-eight, one-six-two point five-one-five. Ward five, it is therefore the recommendation of the zoning board of appeals that a special use permit be approved by unanimous vote of all members present of six to zero, in the name of the applicant only. Eleven-F-three, April eighteen, April twenty-two, Riverside Property Invest requests for a special use permit to operate an Airbnb at three-fifteen Wabash, zero-eight, two-seven-zero, two-zero-nine, zero-zero-eight, located in A-one, single-family residential district, applicable section of the zoning code, one-six-two point zero-nine-four, one-six-two point five-one-five. Ward seven, it is therefore the recommendation of the zoning board of appeals that a special use permit be approved by unanimous vote of all members present of six to zero, in the name of the applicant only. Eleven-F-five, twenty-one, April twenty-two, City of Belleville zoning code amendment, request for amendments of Title fifteen land usage of the revised code of ordinances of City of Belleville, sections one-six-two point two-four-eight-C, one-six-two point seven-eight-C, one-six-two point three-zero-eight-B, and one-six-two point three-two-three-B, special uses with the following amendments, establishments that hold a Class A, B, C, D, or F liquor license, it is therefore the recommendation of the zoning board of appeals that the requested code amendment be granted by unanimous vote of all members present, six to zero. Eleven-F-six, twenty-two, April twenty-two, City of Belleville zoning code amendment, request for amendment of Title fifteen land usage of the revised ordinances of the City of Belleville, Illinois, section one-six-two point five-seven-zero, variances, it is therefore the recommendation of the zoning board of appeals that the requested code amendment be granted by unanimous vote of all members present of five to zero.
Okay, second? No, no motion.
Sheriff, something?
Second?
Eric.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it? Okay.
Eleven-F-four, nineteen, April twenty-two, Project Equity Illinois Incorporated requests for a special use permit to operate an adult-use cannabis dispensing organization at forty-five twenty-nine West Main Street, zero-eight, one-eight, zero-two, one-zero, zero-zero-two, located in a C-two heavy commercial district, applicable section of the zoning code, one-two three point zero-zero-five, one-two three point zero-zero-eight, and one-six-two point five-one-five. Ward three, it is therefore the recommendation of the zoning board of appeals that a special use permit be approved by unanimous vote of all members present of five to zero.
Okay. Motion? Eris, motion to deny. Okay, second?
Ferguson.
Okay, discussion?
Does Project Spencer have an opportunity to speak, Madam Mayor?
Uh, yeah, yeah, in this particular case, he would. I think, for the record, we need to give them the opportunity to either withdraw the request or take formal action on it, but I think he does have the opportunity as the applicant to speak on their official application, and then you take whatever appropriate action you feel is appropriate after that.
I agree with your consensus, but, yes.
Good evening, Alderman and Madam Mayor. Connor Johnston from Project Equity Illinois, on behalf of the applicant. Like you, I actually was working in local politics. I was the chief of staff for London Breed in San Francisco, who at the time was the president of the Board of Supervisors, the equivalent of city council and Board of Supervisors in San Francisco. I left government after California voters passed Prop sixty-four to legalize adult-use cannabis, specifically because I saw the opportunity to bring cannabis into the light, and to make it legal, and to make it safe, to create jobs, and to make it taxed. The reality is, you already have cannabis sellers in your community now, you have for decades. In California, we have over six billion dollars of economic activity happening in the shadows. It's happening illegally by people who don't check IDs, who sell untested products, who abuse their workers, who damage the environment, and who don't pay taxes. You have the same type of drug dealers in this city now. What we are doing in the regulated industry is an opportunity to bring that economic activity into the light, and to pay taxes, and to create jobs, and to be a part of the community. And what is central to PEI's business model is that we are part of the community. We looked very closely at the oncology building, which you approved last, two weeks ago, fourteen to one. You approved it for a cannabis store along the Fifteen by a company called Bluntson Moore. We looked at it, we decided it didn't interest us because it is too far out of the way, because it's not part of the community. Our stores in San Francisco have nine apartments above them in the first case, the other one has two apartments above it, in the same building, the very same building, it's a multi-use building, the cannabis stores on the bottom floor, there are residences above, they love us. They love us specifically because we provide professional security during all business hours, we have cameras that monitor in every direction, we are probably the safest block in the neighborhood, we're quiet, we don't emit odors, we attract foot traffic to the neighboring retail businesses, and we are a positive part of the community. We have a community relations liaison in each one of those stores, with an email and a phone number that everyone in the community knows, so they can reach out to that person anytime there's an issue. And this building appealed to us specifically because it is part of the community. We are not interested in going to a city that wants to shunt us off to the freeway in the darkness. There already are people selling cannabis in the darkness. That's not what we're interested in doing. We want to be a positive part of the community. We don't think that selling cannabis is wrong, we don't think it should be in the dark. We think it is a positive business activity, and it increases safety, it increases retail foot traffic, and it is a net benefit. And that's why this building appealed to us. Mr. Cross indicated that it wasn't eligible at the time, but that he thought it was feasible that a revision could be made to the way in which distance is measured, and I'll tell you, every time I've ever seen distance measured, it's usually path of travel, that's generally standard protocol, so it's not as if someone's carving out a special favor for us. But if what I'm hearing tonight is that the leadership in Belleville would rather have regulated cannabis hidden off by the side of the freeway, then I don't think this is the right city for us, unfortunately. We were excited to be a central part of the economic activity and to be a part of the community. I don't think there is going to be a private enterprise that will be willing or capable to put in the multiple hundreds of thousands of dollars that this building needs to be rehabilitated, so my sense is that it either falls down on itself, or the city buys it, but as I mentioned at the zoning board of appeals, there's sort of an only Nixon can go to China element here, where really only cannabis retail is going to be able to invest the money that that building needs to be viable again, which is considerable. I recognize that there are certain people with religious opposition to cannabis, that's fine, I'm not a theologian, I can't make that argument, I'm only a Catholic school graduate, but I will tell you that the objections they raise about parking and traffic are solvable problems, they are a hundred percent solvable problems. When I worked in local government, I spent a lot of time working on transportation, transportation safety, traffic flow, and as I said, two weeks... And as I said, two weeks ago, we are more than happy to invest whatever it takes to make the site work from a transportation and traffic demand management standpoint. I'm already in conversations with the property manager for the adjacent property about a parking share agreement, because they have a ton of parking that they don't use, I have a call scheduled with her tomorrow morning. So, uh, I, I, I leave the decision up, up to you, but I just want you to know where we are coming from and that uh, simply changing buildings is probably not going to probably not going to meet our vision for what we think community-serving cannabis should be. Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion? Yes.
With, with the fact that we did not change the ordinance, what are we moving on?
Well, I believe, let me look at this.
You're moving on the application for special use permit.
Yeah.
The evidence, because you didn't change ordinance, you wouldn't be able to get a law business license anyway.
So.
That's a practical aspect, but this is, it's a, this is a site-specific zoning determination under one sixty-two, Chapter one sixty-eight.
Yeah, so even if you approved the special use permit and then went to get the license from Jenny, she couldn't issue the license, so in a sense, it's denied by the ordinance that was not amended. So that's why, um, the option for the applicant to withdraw the application is on the table, or if the applicant does not withdraw the application, the, the logical move is to just deny it based upon the understanding that you cannot meet the requirements of one twenty-three. Uh, otherwise, even if you approved it, it sits in the hopper for a year, disappears by default, so to speak.
Yes, Mr. Ovian.
Sunday morning, I was watching television and they were showing a display of various types of drugs that they confiscated on the southern border. One of the drugs I could not even believe, these were gummy bears laced with fentanyl. I'm thinking, what kind of a stupid idiot would do that to a young person? Because what you're doing is going after middle school kids. How sad. It's come to where we need drug money in order to survive. Sad. That's all I'm gonna say.
Yes.
In response to that, that's why these organizations are wonderful, because everything is medically checked, everything is regulated, they do provide security, it is a legal thing. Just as going to a bar and having a drink is legal if you're twenty-one. So my problem with, with, you know, I don't have any problem with that, but I, I, um, I don't particularly, like, care for the, the thought that, you know, that, that's what these people are doing. They're not, they're providing a legal business, a reputable business, and they're, they are doing things in a safe way and, and the light, as, as he said, and and I think there's much to be said for it, we already have one. Um, and I, we're open to two others, and I don't think that our problem is that we're not open to it being in the light or being in our community, it's just this particular location did not work and did not, um, did not sit well with everyone, so, um, anyhow.
Yes, Mr. Randall.
Uh, my question is for the applicant, would you like to withdraw your, uh, your request?
To answer a question with a question, uh, it sounds as if, uh, if this were approved and, uh, vote on the measurement legislation were taken again, theoretically, that would allow us to move forward at this location.
Yeah, there, absolutely, that's true, absolutely. If you issue a special use permit and you go to make an application, you couldn't get a license unless that amendment takes place. There, anyway, you're approving it, but the problem is, when you do your findings of fact, one of the things you're gonna have to look at is you're gonna say, this is not consistent with the intent of the zoning ordinance, which clearly says you want it to be in accordance to one twenty-three. So you have to weigh those findings of fact.
Practically speaking, approving those would be inconsistent with the actual.
Exactly. If he withdraw, if he withdraws it, he can come back to do their application correctly, if it gets denied, he has to wait here or something, is that? Six months. Six months, okay, thank you. I just want to clarify that, so that you can come back at it if that's.
Mayor? If, if I may, okay. A- and I understand the action, uh, previously taken, okay, uh, would warrant, okay, that we would deny this, uh, this zoning request. If you were to re- if you were to pull it back, okay, if you were to remove your request, um, that, that does, um, that does not restart the clock with the state, does it?
No, the state's on its own clock.
Right, so you have how long in order to exercise?
God only knows.
Yeah.
We, we submitted our applications two and a half years ago to the state.
So, um, the action that we've taken previously, I think, makes this a moot point unless the, uh, applicant withdraws the, uh, the request here. But, uh, I think that, uh, the action that we take, took previously, um, has kinda like had a negative impact in terms of, of, um, loc- their locating within the city, so there were so many, uh, licenses issued by the state for the region, we had two that we were fortunate enough, okay, to come and apply to the City of Bellevue. We've accepted one, we're now denying the second. I'm not sure, okay, when the occasion might represent itself, uh, to, uh, offer us another possibility somewhere down the line, so, thank you.
Thank you. Any more discussion?
Can I just confirm, you're not withdrawing? Correct.
My request would be that the council reconsider the previous item, but I, I do not intend to withdraw it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any more discussion? Alderman, hearing none?
There's a motion and a second on the floor to deny. So, a yes vote is to deny, a no vote is to approve, okay? Gentleman?
No.
Schaefer?
No.
Steele?
No.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Yes.
Wygant?
Yes.
Ostoff?
No.
Hazel?
No.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Duco?
No.
Eris?
Aye.
Randall?
No.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
No.
Ovian?
Aye.
Same vote, of seven ayes, eight noes.
So now, questions, or is there a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second?
I'm sorry, Duco was second?
Yes.
Now we're gonna, motion to approve it.
Oh, perhaps, I mean, the city attorney.
Didn't we just agree that, like, voting no one is denied?
This is a, I'm sorry. Go ahead, please. Oh, this is a, so the motion to deny failed, so now there's a motion to approve. So a yes vote is to approve the special use permit. You're understanding that you already denied the proposed amendment to the ordinance and allowing businesses.
So you, so your original motion to deny did not pass?
Right, exactly.
So it's still open on the floor?
No, I, what I mean by it doesn't make sense is we're gonna approve it, but he can't get a business license, so where does it go from here? That's what doesn't make sense to me.
But it doesn't, that's, I mean, that's fine.
That's how, that's how, unfortunately, that's how we got denied the previous.
That's exactly why we like the supplementary regulations for any zoning action to be under the zoning ordinance. And that's why we're gonna start bringing those amendments to you, because this is the kind of situation that can happen. You're comparing two different sections of the code when it contains two.
So if we approve this permit, we can't get another one then, right? Because that, that would be our number two?
No.
That's a great point, no, that's a great point. Because in a sense, you've approved two special uses and you'd have one sitting dormant, but you technically issued two special uses. Although.
But it's a license.
But it's a license, that's a good argument.
Yeah, because we're not gonna issue a license. I just wanna make sure when I vote.
So the license can't technically be issued, you have one remaining.
Correct, I only have the license up, okay.
If you approve this permit, it's going to be, it's going to be inconsistent with the vote that you took on the proposed amendment to Chapter one twenty-three, please understand that.
Which could be revisited.
I'm sorry.
Which could be revisited, and we still have.
Which could be revisited by a motion to reconsider by somebody who voted in the maj- well, there was no majority.
Yeah.
You have to come back through.
Or not so much.
Or it's illegal.
Then we have a precedent once before where we, we, we made a motion to reconsider.
Motion to reconsider has to be made by somebody who's voted in the majority under Robert's rules of order, but your, your vote on the amendment failed eight to eight, so there was no majority.
So we would send that back to zoning, and then it can be presented back to council?
Ordinance.
No, the legislative.
I mean, ordinance is a legal idea. You, you can also table this item, and we could look at the other ordinance, and if it needs to go be reconsidered, then we can talk about it at legal and ordinance. The problem is with, when you talk about zoning, we're regulated by the state statute in terms of landing sections, and if say this is withdrawn or denied and it comes back in six months, we gotta go through the whole public hearing process again on an individual site, where if, if you table this thing for a month, it gives you another month to think about one twenty-three. And it could theoretically go legal and ordinance and come back, but that's, that's clearly up to you.
Is there a motion on the floor to approve?
There is.
I made the motion.
Was there a second?
Yeah, yes. Duco second, maybe.
Can I make a motion to table the item?
Sure.
I'll say it better.
Is there a second?
Yes, Chris Raffray.
So, under your city council rules, a motion to table takes precedence. So you would vote on the motion to table the first?
Okay. Should I have a motion and a second?
Any discussion on tabling? Okay. Let's call for the vote.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wygant?
Aye.
Ostoff?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Whitaker?
No.
Duco?
Aye.
Eris?
No.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
No.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
No.
Gentleman?
Aye.
The ayes have it, eleven to four.
So we need to, uh, meet about this before the next meeting with legal and ordinance, and we have to call a special. Okay, let's move on.
Economic Development.
Okay, yes, Alderman Randall.
Oh, boy.
From Economic Development.
Giddy up.
Do you want another five minutes?
Eleven G one, motion to approve the infill development program residential sale contract for the property commonly known as one thousand eight Cart Lane, so moved.
Second.
Discussion? Okay. Roll call.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wygant?
Aye.
Ostoff?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Eris?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Gentleman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Motion carries, mayor.
Okay.
Okay, eleven G two, we're on a roll. Motion to approve the infill development program residential sale contract for the property commonly known as twenty-four Queensway Drive, so moved.
Eric's second. Okay, any discussion?
Hearing none, roll call. Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wygant?
Aye.
Ostoff?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Eris?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Gentleman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Motion carries, mayor.
Okay, next motion?
Okay, well, it was good while it lasted. Eleven G three, motion to approve, accept the conceptual plan of the Aben Street incubator and event space request for proposal for one twenty-three, one twenty-seven, Mascuta Avenue, so moved.
Eric's second. Okay, any discussion?
Madam Mayor, I move to table this and to return it to economic development annexation and extend the period of time for sixty days to submit proposals.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Okay, so now, once again, we have a different motion on the floor.
I asked to, uh, table this for a couple of reasons. First of all, this has nothing to do with any particular developer. I did not meet with any developer, I did not meet with the current developer, nor anybody else who asked me to meet with me to discuss the proposal. To keep this process reasonable, my issue was economic development annexation, and it still is now, that there was insufficient advertising in this to make sure that every person who was interested or grew, or wanted to do this, had an opportunity to do so. It was advertised on our website for three weeks, for twenty-one days, that's it. There was a house on Park Avenue that was announced on Facebook and multiple different things, et cetera. Perhaps some news democrat could pick up on this, you know, and a lot of other developers who are interested in doing this, we have one proposal, okay? There are places that have one option all the time, it's not the United States, but they have one option, I'd rather have other options. As you can see tonight, this is a passionate issue for the people on both sides of this. I understand the applicant wants to go on with this, et cetera, I'm not opposed to proposal whatsoever. I just think there are other options, there are other people who are against it. I would say that there are people who have issues with the applicant, and might, I, I will say this directly to them, that's your problem, okay? The issue is, what's in your application and what's in any other applications that are out there, that's what the issue is for. So I just wanna look to see if anyone else is interested, and if they are, they need to get off of, off of it and do it. So that's why I'd like to extend this period of time, table this for right now, let's slow this process down. We've heard from, from citizens on, on, on Albon Street, Garfield Street, some of them, they have legitimate complaints here. Let's just slow this down a little bit, and whatever we do here, whoever puts in the applications for this, let's let people take a look at this and be involved in this process, because this is a serious issue. It's in a historic district, it's across from Gustavus Covermont, which is a, a great historical significance. And I'm opposed to what this plan is, I'm opposed to this. It may be the plan that we picked, it may be the ones the residents and neighbors are dealing with the issues that are out there, there are issues they brought up, such as parking on Albon Street, and that could be a problem with this, I don't know, but it's an issue they brought up. Let's get the community involved in this process and allow them to take a look at these proposals, whatever they be, before we just say, this is what we're doing, that's it.
Oh, who was first?
Joe.
Oh, Joe.
I understood the alderman saying that his, his objection was to the process. Everything else doesn't matter, it's the process. So, has a precedent been set? What is the normal process, have we had other?
So has a precedent been set? What is the normal process? Have we had other processes before in the same time period that this one was let for? And if we table this at this point, it's an undue business. It puts her ideas, this applicant's ideas, in jeopardy, because now we have let for ideas with a timetable that everyone had the same timetable to, to get their proposals in, regardless of how polished their proposals were. And she submitted hers, and now we go back and say, you have done what was requested of you. Now let's publicize your idea and let's allow everyone else to build off of that. I think that's unfair practices by this council.
Mary?
As the, the alderwoman in that ward, I agree with Chris that the process was not followed because it was put out on social media many, many weeks before anyone else had an opportunity to submit a proposal, and it was put out there in a way that said, I've got this. So a lot of people that wanted it looked at it and thought, well, we had an inside job here and we just gave it to her.
So you're faulting our economic development department that they're not functioning appropriately.
No, I'm not saying that at all, Joe. I'm saying that the process of the RFP was on a tiny little scale for such a large, beautiful area. It was three weeks on the Bellev- City of Bellevue website. It wasn't in the newspaper.
And everybody had-
It wasn't a public, made public.
We're playing by the same rules.
Well, economic development didn't make it public to enough people.
Ken, I would like to say about the Facebook pages. The Fa- Facebook pages, the way things are written sometimes on those are not totally transparent.
And they are bashing the older people that are trying to represent their constituents.
And the fact of the matter is, is that this, the original thing that was presented had Charlie's also involved in it. But the way it was, nothing was promised to anybody. And the fact of the matter is, it was going out on Facebook and the way it was worded, and this is my opinion, and I have heard this from other people also, but the way it was worded, it seemed like a done deal. And the fact of the matter is, it was never a done deal. But after six or seven months of this going out, 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 out. It's kind of the same situation where people were voting on the mural project that you thought for years you were voting on murals that were going on the walls and they were- But I'm saying, but I'm just saying there's a pattern here that we, and actually I did talk to Kathy about it. I, I made a point that it did have to go through our, uh, request for proposal. And Cliff Cross, our economic developer, had also spoken with Kathy several times that it did have to go through RFP process. But the fact of the matter is, the impression from being constantly there could give, and several people have said, we thought it was a done deal. Which is maybe, I don't know if Mr. Owens is still here, that, that had spoke to that. You know, people thought it was a done deal.
Mayor, with all due respect though, that is, that is a problem with our process that we need to deal with, that your administration needs to deal with. But this was let, the proposals came in based off of the rules that we set and was followed. And so it's setting a dangerous precedent whenever we let these things and people present their proposals and, and we may or may not agree with them, and then we go back and say, oh, well, we didn't present it right. You didn't, you followed the rules, but we're changing our rules now and we're, and we relet these things.
Mr. Hazel, there is an ordinance that says. Would you like to address that, Cliff? The ordinance?
If I could address it, just for everybody's understanding, you have an infill project ordinance. It does not even require requests for proposals. Requests for proposals, though, when they're issued, always contain the, the language that you can reject any and all proposals for, for any reason. It could be that you don't have a sufficient number of proposals. It could be, you know, a- any reason, and that happens. I've seen it happen with request proposals from professional services. Maybe you put out an RFP for accounting services and you only have, you know, a few, one, two, three, and you didn't, you think you need a, a bigger pool. But again, there's no requirement in the municipal code or your ordinances that, that you conduct an RFP process. It's intended to elicit proposals. There's no, so there's also no requirement that you accept one just because you issued it. So this decision rests in the sole discretion of this council. Whether or not you accept it or, or there's a motion to, there's a motion to table, and I can't believe I'm saying this for a third time because I never had to lose a meeting. That motion to table takes precedence over the other ones. You gotta vote on that first. This is the most motions to table I've counted in my career, but, but so just keep that in mind, that, that, you know, this is a decision that rests in, in this, in this discretion of a majority of the council.
That's what I was gonna have you address about what the ordinance said, but Garrett has already done that, of course.
Oh, and he's asked a great question about what's been done in the past, how's this work. Alderman Wagon and I had a project with developers, we were asking for developers to come in, opened up the structure, they toured it. And this went on for months and months and months, and it took a long time. So we have somewhat of a precedent and if we don't have one in writing, but yes, I've seen it before where the city is advertising it, we're calling contractors, hey, come look at this. We had a couple of carpenters that lived on the same block, they were gonna do it, and then they backed out. We called board developers and board carpenters just to get somebody that would sign off on letting us sell up this house for a dollar just so they could spend major bucks, and they're still working on today. But it was not only just public, and we worked out trying to find-
Couldn't find it.
Couldn't find enough people to get enough interest in it. So, uh, there was a, there was a vast difference between one of the last ones I saw and this one. Uh, this project was beautiful, but before I get to chefs and all that, I wanna know that we are doing the best we can. Our endless demand.
Yes, Jamie?
This is Eris.
This is Eris.
Thanks. Can we have a question answered? How long does an RFP have to be advertised? Before I go on to speak to any of this, can somebody answer that question?
However long you determine.
Okay, but what was determined for this?
I don't know what, I don't know what's-
Issues else.
Okay, but, okay, so then Economic Development determined it was twenty, twenty-one days, and in twenty-one days, this is the proposal that we got.
They also asked for a extension at the, at the economic-
We did not approve that.
No, it really wasn't an extension. It was an extension because we thought there were gonna be more coming in, in the mail, that they got lost in the mail. Did we get any lost in the mail?
We, we have not. So to your point, there's no set time frame subject to the RFP. But what we have been experiencing at, at the department, we did with our economic development strategy with the move, the mail has been delayed. But what we wanna stress is the RFP is to get the best proposal for the city. And it started the fact finding process, and we wanna get it right. So what was discussed at the EDNA meeting was, do we kick it back and do an additional thirty days to repost and republish? Do we recommend this, or do we just simply bring it back to the EDNA committee to get a little bit more time to make sure nothing slipped through the cracks? Bear in mind, you're, anything you get tonight is just a concept. It doesn't enter into a binding agreement, because we still have to tailor the contract very similar to the infill program with the provisions of that. And what I mean by that, it may be determined that this is the job scope, this is the cost, this is the timeframe. This, the applicant has to secure or bond this, very similar to a subdivision. In other words, they put twenty percent down in the escrow. If they don't perform, they forfeit that, and the property comes back to the city. So what I can say is whoever responds to this RFP, but the intent is to improve that and do a concept that we approve as a whole, as a council, and we are not getting this property to make a profit on it. Because the whole point is to secure that neighborhood. So, you know, um, just get it right. That's, that's my, that's my advice.
Can I finish talking? Sorry. I just wanna speak to a couple of things that are really frustrating to listen to. Facebook is a social media platform. We all have freedom of speech. Um, nothing that was said, and believe me, I followed it all, because I think it's a great proposal. I think it's a neat, uh, a very inventive thing to bring to that area of Main Street, right off of Main Street and continue to broaden the scope of, of Bellevue and, and things that draw people to our city with that being a historic district. It's a beautiful place to walk in, and so that draws people to the corner house, because you know what? Nobody knows about it, really. It's not done. And so like figuring out ways to get people to come to that and to be interested in it, maybe that brings more donors. But as far as Facebook's concerned, nothing was ever said like this is a done deal. It may have appeared that way to other people, but that's the way you read into it, not what she had said. I went back and I looked at it because I knew somebody was going to say that tonight. Nothing was said that way. Did she put it out there? Yes, she's trying to sell her product. She's trying to sell this, this proposal. And who wouldn't try to sell the proposal and get people interested in it and get some backing? Um, especially when she probably knows she's up against a whole lot of other things that have nothing to do with her proposal, but some other things that have, you know, come up in, in light, whatever that might be. But I'm not saying we need to move on it tonight. I'm not saying that waiting sixty days is a bad idea. I don't think it's a bad idea. What, what I'm saying is she followed the rules and, and now it feels like we're punishing her for following the rules or we're it's just, it feels a little, for me as a newbie, and I'll still be a newbie, I'll still call myself that. But like it just feels like there's some shady stuff going on that's a little underhanded and I don't understand what it is. And I wish I understood more about what's really happening here and what we're really talking about.
Well, I think that we had-
Mayor, that's why we, um, that's why we need to, to table this, because I want to address the Facebook post that was written three hours ago. From Kathy Mordini, if you can't make the city hall meeting, watch us on Welcome to Bellevue page tonight. My alderwoman wouldn't discuss it with me today. I am not her alderwoman. She lives in, uh, the address I wrote down when she spoke this morning. But I think she's just talking about the building that she's interested in. Yes, but that's not, that's, that's mine. I'm representing the people that live there and my constituents did not want this. So that's my position. So then we don't talk to people just because our constituents don't wait? Wait, whoa, 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 whoa. No, I'm just saying, we talk to people, but I don't really feel like, get to know your older person because maybe they have an inside track. No, that is not what th- this is about. It never has been.
Yes, Mr. Whitaker?
Mayor, to address something that we haven't talked about yet, but that was brought up by one of the speakers tonight, and this is probably a question for the city attorney. There was a discussion about the requirement for this to be heard and dealt with at historic preservation prior to coming to council with the opinion that a council vote would basically supersede what they were doing. Is, do we have any such requirement to?
I'm, I'm not familiar with that.
Ultimately, you, you as a council, you hear the recommendation of historic preservation.
Yeah.
So-
But that would be like us hearing a zoning case without it going to zone. That's what I'm asking. Is there, are we out of order here?
So- There wasn't any.
Well, this, this is what I heard in the conversations tonight. I heard National Register of Historic Places and I heard Historic District. Two different answers. National Register of Historic Places is, is a badge of honor at the National Register. And that really, standards really only come into play at that point, at the local level. If you're the applicant trying to get federal funds or state funds to do work, then you're obligated to follow certain requirements. Then you have your local historic districts, which is adopted via your local historic preservation ordinance. What those are, those are really architectural standards that you have at a local level to issue a certificate of appropriateness to ensure the exterior of the property meets the neighborhood and is consistent with the architectural, historical significance of that neighborhood.
But they would have to do that with you if and when a proposal was-
They were involved as a pri- as a private entity. And they came in and said, I wanna do this. I can't, and it's permitted by right in the underlying zoning. I can't deny it. What I can tell them is, I wanna see what the exterior looks like, and if it doesn't meet, it has to go to the historic preservation ordinance for them to consider, evaluate it, and make a recommendation to you as a council as a whole. So improving the concept as a whole does not bypass the historical architecture.
So that, that stuff would happen.
That's a different action, yes, sir.
Wes, I believe somebody in public participation said that it has not gone before.
No, it hasn't.
Okay.
We know that. We've been speaking with Jack and Molly.
Okay, hold on. Kathy, if you're gonna talk, I need you on the microphone.
We've been talking to the commission regarding this property for quite some time now, and it has not gone through it. That's why the proposal says that it is a proposal, pending review from them. So it has not been approved. These are recommendations that he gave me on, um, the era and what he thinks it needs to be. So we are expecting for him to, uh- It, it needs to go through the, I think.
Maybe that's why we spoke about it tonight.
I've, I've addressed it.
Okay.
Okay.
Is it up? Ken, uh, we have another lady that's on the historic preservation council, and we would have to give her permission to speak. Is that appropriate with the council, or would you like to?
I would agree.
Do you, it, does anyone not agree with me to speak?
Didn't we have a motion to table?
We sure did.
Yes, there is a motion on the floor.
So we have a motion and a second to table, and it sounds like it needs to be tabled because we need to get other things.
Yes. And I, I do believe we did have what I put in record for a historic preservation.
I don't know.
Okay.
This, this motion to table is really tantamount, I, did you mention referring it back to?
Yes.
Yes, bringing it back to.
It's a motion to refer.
Back to economic development.
And a motion to refer still, still takes precedence.
This is a one of our, maybe like three of our- Our cops to sleep, aren't we? But you know what the good thing is about this? Is that we have public participation really improving in the city. And we have, we have aldermen that are really voicing their opinions exactly what they think in, uh, citizens, and that is how government works with all of us voicing our opinions and then decisions being made. So, um, I think it's a good thing that, well, some of you may not agree that our zoning board meeting went to after eleven the other night.
We're coming up with a clause.
But anyway. Okay.
Excuse me.
With the motion, let's go.
Excuse me. Excuse me, I have a question.
Yes.
Please. We have a motion to table and refer back to economic development. Does this motion include reopening the RFP process?
I agree with that, yes.
Yes, that was part of the motion.
For what timeframe again, please?
He said sixty days.
For sixty days. Okay, thank you.
And if I understood correctly, uh, try to coordinate with the V and D, try to coordinate-
Kris, advertise and cover some reach on the department.
And we'll be happy to try to reach out to, uh, I heard national, maybe we reach out to the national, or the state, I mean, State Historic Preservation Office, see if they can direct some, some, uh, options to us so we can republish this at as many sites. The reason we did just the city site is that's where a lot of the bids have come through in the past. But I think to your point, mayor, I think it's good that we're learning and evaluating the process and we'll definitely- And we'll definitely report to the EDNA. Even though they won't be back by the next meeting, we'll report to them who we posted it with at that point.
Okay, any more discussion? Okay.
I am gonna ask, Chris, would you just repeat your motion?
It's a motion to table and return to the economic, uh, safety. And to reopen the period for sixty days, directing the economic development department to increase the coverage and reach of advertising of RFP.
And Alderman Elmore?
Second.
Good with that. Okay.
Okay, roll call.
Elmore? Wigan? Ostoff?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Eris?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dittelman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Now, we move on. Is it eleven yet?
Yeah.
Okay. So, now, our next one is, uh, oh, communications with Jenny.
Can I read these together or am I reading these? Are you sure?
Yeah.
Okay. Twelve A, Juneteenth celebrations, six eighteen, twenty twenty-two, request from Crimson Achievement to host a Juneteenth celebration Saturday, June eighteen, twenty twenty-two, twelve P M. to seven P M. at Goss Park. Additional city services, picnic tables and trash toters. Twelve B, Blessed Believers Annual Community Block Party, six eleven, twenty twenty-two, request from Blessed Believers to host a own community block party. Saturday, June eleventh, twenty twenty-two, eleven A M. to three P M. street closure request, East Lincoln Street between Charles and Church, ten A M. to four P M. No additional city services requested. Twelve C, Experience Live Music Row, eight thirteen, twenty twenty-two, request from Copper Fire to host Experience Live Music Row. Saturday, August thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, twelve P M. to eleven P M. street closure request. South Jackson from East Main to parking lot entrance, six A M. to twelve A M., eight fourteen, twenty twenty-two. Additional city services, picnic tables. Twelve D, Strangers and Dylan Wolfe Band, ten one, twenty twenty-two. Request from Copper Fire to host the Strangers and Dylan Wolfe Band, Saturday, October first, twenty twenty-two, two P M. to eleven P M. street closure request. South Jackson from East Main to parking lot entrance, six A M. to twelve A M., ten to twenty-two. Additional city services, picnic tables. I need a motion.
Schaefer, someone.
Steele, second.
Okay, can I ask a quick question? All right, so, um, the twelfth A M. time?
To reopen the street?
Yeah, so will the music stop before that?
Yeah, the actual event's only till eleven P M.
Okay, perfect.
But they need an hour to clear it. Yes.
All right, sorry, I wasn't, I'm-
That's okay. It's okay.
Woo! All right.
Okay, any discussion?
Are we gonna vote on ordinance nine oh four eight tonight in this section?
The, the liquor license thing?
I thought, I thought we decided that-
Yeah, this has nothing to do with that.
All right.
This is, they, these are just communications and that, that ordinance will not even be called tonight.
Okay. Any more discussion? Okay, roll call.
No.
Oh, no, we, I, eyes are a maze. Okay. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The eyes have it, sorry. Okay. Resolution, a motion to read by title only. Resolution three, thirty-four forty-two, thirty-four forty-three, and thirty-four forty-four.
Eris, so moved.
Second.
Discussion?
As a group?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The eyes. If it's a state, Jenny?
Fourteen A, resolution thirty-four forty-two, twenty twenty-two, a resolution of support for the City of Belleville program year twenty twenty-two. Application for community development black grant funding, West Day Street improvements, eighth to tenth and thirteenth to seventeenth. Fourteen B, resolution thirty-four forty-three, twenty twenty-two, a resolution of support for submission of Metro East Park Recreation District, NPRD fiscal year twenty-two. Community planning application. Fourteen C, resolution thirty-four forty-four, twenty twenty-two. A resolution amending the annual budget of the City of Belleville, Illinois for the fiscal year beginning on the first day of May, twenty twenty-two, and ending on the thirtieth day of April, twenty twenty-three.
Okay, Eris, so moved.
Second?
Schaefer?
Discussion? Roll call.
Wigan?
Aye.
Ostoff?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Eris?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dittelman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, motion to approve resolution. Oh, if read, yeah, if we've already read that. Okay. Okay, ordinances to be read, read by title only. Ordinance is ninety forty-six, ninety forty-nine?
Pull out nine oh four eight?
He, he, ninety forty-seven, ninety forty-eight, ninety fifty-four will not be read.
Yes, I wasn't gonna read those, but, okay. Ninety forty-six, ninety forty-nine, ninety fifty, ninety fifty-one, ninety fifty-two, ninety fifty-three, ninety fifty-five, and ninety fifty-second. Six, sorry.
Schaefer, someone.
Whitaker, second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it? Okay, Jenny?
Out of all of those, is there any that I need to read separately? Fifteen A, ordinance ninety forty-six and ordinance amending title nine, general regulations, chapter ninety-three, nuisances, section ninety-three point zero eight zero, definitions of the revised code of ordinances of the City of Belleville as amended. Fifteen D, ordinance ninety forty-nine, twenty twenty-two, and ordinance amending article seven, traffic code, chapter seventy-six, parking schedules of the revised ordinances of the City of Belleville, Illinois as amended by many portions of sections thereof. Fifteen E, ordinance ninety fifty, twenty twenty-two, and ordinance authorizing sale, conversion of personal property, sixteen iPads. Fifteen F, ordinance ninety fifty-one, twenty twenty-two, is owning ordinance in regards to case fourteen, April twenty-two, Nicole and Chris Hettenhausen. Fifteen G, ordinance ninety fifty-two, twenty twenty-two, is owning ordinance in regards to case number fifteen, April twenty-two, West Haven LLC. Fifteen H, ordinance ninety fifty-three, twenty twenty-two, is owning ordinance in regards to case number eighteen, April twenty-two, Riverside Property and Best LLC. Fifteen J, ordinance ninety fifty-five, twenty twenty-two, is owning ordinance in regards to case number twenty-one, April twenty-two, City of Belleville zoning code amendment. Fifteen K, ordinance ninety fifty-six, twenty twenty-two, is owning ordinance in regards to case number twenty-two, April twenty-second, City of Belleville zoning code amendment.
Eris, so moved. Schaefer, second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, uh, roll call.
Ostoff?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Eris?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dittelman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wigan?
Aye.
Motion's carrying, Mayor.
Okay. A motion to approve ordinances.
Nope, you just did that. You're good.
I'm like, okay. Uh, miscellaneous new business, a motion to approve motor pool planes in the amount of ninety-two thousand, four hundred and seventy-seven dollars and ninety-four cents.
Ferguson.
Duco?
Discussion? Roll call.
Hazel?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Eris?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dittelman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wigan?
Aye.
Ostoff?
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Okay, now, we do have executive session this evening.
Motion to go into executive session.
For purposes of collective argument under, uh, section two C two of the, uh, litigation under section two C eleven. And I anticipate-
And fire chief, and Jamie, you need to stay. Adios, everybody else? Oh, lucky dogs.
Bye, Lily.
Bye.
Okay.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve the MOU with Belleville firefighters, Local Fifty-three.
Second it.
Okay, discussion?
And this is on the, the prior MOU we have with, related to COVID-nineteen compensatory, uh, act.
Okay, no, hearing no other discussion, roll call.
Whitaker?[1768.41]